Okay, we're gonna move to the next item on the agenda which is public comment and certainly we are checking the issue of the live feed in the atrium and outside the chambers. We have allotted a total of sixty minutes for public comment. Each speaker who comes before will come to the podium to my left, to the right side of the chambers. You have a total of two minutes to provide your comment. Please take note of the screens to your left or your right which will indicate how much time you have to provide your comment and as the clock comes down to zero, please bring your comments promptly to a close. We have a number of speakers signed up today and I will start with the first three. I'll call the first three and ask Mr. Howard Smith, Kelly Lewis, and Deacon Casey Cameron to come forward. Howard Smith first, please.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. I'd like the City Council to reconsider its ban on drifting. We have no actual studies done on the effect of the community. There is a scheduled event July 21st and I would like the city to come out and actually see what kind of effect we're having on local community. We did some sound tests and it was not that much above the ambient noise, so I'd like the city to check for itself. Also, I was just at a drift event up at Road Atlanta two weeks ago where they had thirty thousand people up there for a professional event. That's a lot of money that came into the area. Watching the event, a lot of young people were influenced by it and want to learn the sport. If they don't have a place to learn it, they will be doing it out on the streets and we don't want that. People will be getting hurt and killed. We have enacted new sound levels for our cars. I just spent the weekend up at Road Atlanta again with the Sports Car Club of America, SCCA, with their sound steward up there and learned how to check the cars properly, to follow their procedures. They have a nationwide policy which is ninety-three dB and we have decided we will meet that. The SCCA runs at Turner Field without having any problems with the local community, so if we adapt their standards, I feel that we won't be having any negative effects on the local community. We're trying to work with everybody the best we can and do whatever we can to fit in. It does bring a lot of money downtown. People come from other states.
Kelly Lewis. Please no applause.
My name is Kelly Lewis and I am Atlanta business owner and yes, Councilman Shook, I do profit from drifting, as do a lot of Atlanta businesses. I'm here today in opposition of the Amendment twelve zero oh five oh two that in essence bans drifting events at Turner Field and will negatively affect my business. I have with me today a petition addressed to the mayor and to you, the council, with nine thousand signatures on it and of most importance to you, well over four hundred signatures from City of Atlanta residents. Four hundred voters that want to see our events continue and support our community. These events provide our community with a safe, controlled driving experience and draw drivers and spectators from all over the southeast. In other words, these events draw money into the City of Atlanta, our demographic, our consumers ages eighteen to thirty-five, who frequent Atlanta hotels, restaurants, gas stations, parts stores, tire vendors, and local shops. We are asking for a reconsideration of the amendment to facilitate a dialogue with the community that surrounds Turner Field, a chance to adjust our tech requirements, start times, and holiday event scheduling. We are willing to compromise in order to continue drift events, just as all of the other motorsports that call Turner Field their home. We made a parking lot in Atlanta famous in two short weeks. The income potential for the city for those events has increased exponentially due to these efforts. Motorsports means money spent. Doesn't the City of Atlanta need this money? My business does and I ask today that you support us in a reconsideration of this amendment. I'm gonna deliver this to the mayor's office. That's the petition.
Thank you very much. Deacon Casey Cameron.
Deacon Casey Cameron, former chairman deacon of Live Life Tabernacle, appraised current there at First Convocation. I'm here to talk about closing of schools. I mean, y'all don't seem to be fighting harder to keep schools open for our kids. And if they're the future of tomorrow, why are we allowing the public school system to close? Also, public restrooms in the park, such as Hirsch Park, I mean, y'all have restroom at Woodbridge Park but they close at a certain time. And then y'all have people that you and they in the park because there's no restroom. There's no low-income houses in this city because every place that I have went, especially HUD, and got a list and called those apartment complexes, they're not low incomes. And also, jobs in the City of Atlanta seem not to be for the US citizen but the non-US citizen and that is truly ridiculous. I'd like to see more of you all to start viewing the homeless shelters instead of trying to close them, trying to find solution to get them low-income houses and jobs because there's no solution. Everyone seems to say, "Let's close them." But where you gonna put them at once you close them? So let's stop doing all this talking and start showing the citizen that y'all really on board. Because when y'all ran for office, y'all promised this, y'all promised that. We seeing the opposite. We seeing you looking more out for buckhead than bankhead. Have a great day.
Thank you, Deacon. The next three speakers are Ms. Valerie Waters, Mr. Jerry Meyer Jackson Jr., and Ms. Amy Combs. I'm sorry, Ciantos, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. Ms. Waters.
Hi, I am Valerie Waters and I am here also in support of drifting in Atlanta and I really do urge you to reconsider your ban on drifting. I am a lifelong resident of Atlanta although I do now live outside the city. I was born and raised in Atlanta. I have three children and two of them are involved in drifting and the third one, like me, enjoys being a spectator. And I would like to say that drifting truly is a sport and probably you guys don't know a whole lot about drifting and I would urge you, as Howard did, to perhaps come out to an event and watch sometime. It's a sport that requires a lot of skill and working knowledge of automotive physics. It demands a clear mind and concentration. These kids are all showing a high level of perseverance and optimism when they get out there and do this and they're very generous with each other with their time and their knowledge. You'll see that there are eighty-six hundred-plus signatures on the petition. I think Kelly said there were nine thousand. This represents a lot of different people. There are graphic artists, computer programmers, business owners, contractors, bankers, security techs, salespeople, mechanics, machinists, fabricators, bakers, and bookkeepers, all represented by these drifters. So they are participating in the economy of Atlanta and drifting does bring further income into Atlanta when people come from out of state and from other cities. So I would urge you, please, to reconsider your ban on drifting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry Meyer Jackson.
Good afternoon, President Mitchell. Good afternoon to all of the council members and everybody within the sound of my voice. Safety at MARTA. You know, for a couple of years, I complained to City of Atlanta, to Fulton County, to the Assistant Chief of the City of Atlanta Fire Department, to the Chief of the City of Atlanta Fire Department, same people with Fulton County, about this south end of the MARTA rail station at Peachtree Center getting closed. I've looked at that as a dangerous, dangerous situation for the citizens of Atlanta. These stations were not built with extra entrances and exits. Everyone is vital to the safe dispersal or exit of people from a station. Found somebody, Ms. Moore, to complain to. They're right here in Atlanta and they're concerned about it and you're not gonna see some of these situations to continue at MARTA the way they have been. It's the Federal Railroad Administration over on Forsyth Street and they're looking at these matters that I've brought to them. Another thing that concerns me is the news media. Channel eleven news cracking down on some poor welfare people that are cashing the checks at maybe some places that some of them shouldn't be cashing them. Well, we've gotta remember that don't all neighborhoods have banks? And some of these checks, they charge three and four percent, banks do, to cash them. A person receiving a disability check for six hundred and seventy-four dollars could easily pay a twenty-two dollar fee at some of these places to cash a check. You know, if I had a convenience store that was selling beer and cigarettes and all that was gonna cash my check for free, I just might go down there and cash it and get me a pack of cigarettes. Even the amount of money they reported was less than two percent. Tempest in a tee park catering to these rural Republican legislators. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Amy Ciantos and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your last name.
No worries. My name is Amy Ciantos. I'm a resident of the City of Atlanta. She's my neighbor. I'm just here to speak to you about the ban on the drifting events at Turner Field. Several of my friends and neighbors are involved in this sport. I would just like for the council to give consideration. The group is willing to work with the residents of the condo association to make the events less loud, to maybe have fewer events, and to adjust the start times so no one's rest schedule is altered or upset. Basically, drifting brings a lot of revenue into the area. People come from out of town. There are minority business owners here that stand to lose their business if this drifting ordinance goes through. No ordinance. So I would just really appreciate it if the city would be able to take a look at everything and be willing to work with the group to see if we could come to some sort of resolve. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Owen Omenson, Dave Walker, and your Jenny Simonock. I know I've mispronounced that name and I'll try it again in a second. Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Talking about twelve dash, twelve dash zero dash zero six ninety-five. For many years, Public Works has been installing traffic calming speed humps, which they prefer to call speed tables, in a manner that does not conform with city code and for many years I've been pointing this out and calling for the code to be respected and obeyed. Rather than following existing code, with this proposed ordinance, they want new code that more closely follows what they have been doing. The version before you today is just one of several versions that they have suggested over the past two years. This proposed ordinance is flawed in several respects, requiring examination and discussion and I know that the place for discussion is in committee. In the past, I had been provided with a copy of any proposed ordinance prior to the committee meeting so that I could study it and formulate comments. This time, however, was different. I received no advance copy nor any indication this would be coming before committee for a vote, which happened last week while I was out of town. I returned only to find this latest version was introduced in committee and voted on. It's no better than existing code, in fact, it's worse in several respects. Existing code ties the installation of speed humps to nationally-recognized standards which respect the balance between the need to control speeding and the need to provide emergency vehicles with an unobstructed path as they respond to police, fire, and medical emergencies. Public Works has not been following code and will probably continue to do so until the executive branch, the mayor's office, steps in to demand compliance with code. But neither this administration nor the previous one has shown any interest in requiring adherence to the code. Through new language in this proposed ordinance, Public Works also seeks council's permission to further deviate from accepted practice. But if you want the City of Atlanta, at least on paper, to remain committed to nationally-recognized standards regarding traffic calming, you will vote against this ordinance. I hope you do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Mr. President, council members. Since the foundation of the world, the almighty God has declared that a man shall leave his father and leave his mother and cleave to his wife and they shall be one flesh. I would like to say to President Barack Obama and to Congressman John Lewis and to the weak-kneed black preachers in the City of Atlanta and in America, because Barack Obama decreed that gays can marry gays doesn't make it right. John Lewis says a gay right is a civil rights. Mr. Councilman, Mr. Congressman, you are lying. A gay right is not a civil rights. To be born black in America was not something that one would choose. To be gay is a lifestyle. America better wake up or we gonna find ourselves on the bedrock of doing what the Babylonians did, what the Romans did, what the Greeks did, and what all powerful nations did in the history past. Mr. Barack Obama, if you look inside a Time Magazine bowing down to King Abdullah of Saudi Arabia, no American president has ever bowed down to another nation. Mr. Obama, you need to wake up. What we need to do in America is get some knees, get some strength. And to black preachers in Atlanta and in America, you are not preachers. You are false prophets. You are people who propagate lies. You are lies. You are children of the devil. You are not children of Abraham. Thank you.
My name is Evgeny Smolnyich and I've been in the drifting community for probably over five years and I've actually experienced the, like, bad effects from street drifting, from reckless driving and it's put a pretty big impact on my life. And having a place to go and do it legally is an awesome thing. And I just wanted to ask you to veto the ordinance and give us a place to do what we love. That's about it.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Ryan Yu, Junior Broadness, and Brianna Dupree. Mr. Ryan Yu.
Hi, my name is Ryan Eco. I'm here on behalf of the drifting ordinance as well. I've been in the drifting community since two thousand and four and have been going to these Turner events for the past, I guess, eight, or seven years now. It's had a huge impact on my life and it's something I'm extremely passionate about. It's kept me out of a lot of trouble as far as legally. I see a lot of people getting in trouble on the streets because we used to not have these events going on and it's given us a place to go and a place to have fun and not have to worry about anything. And I just wish you would look over it again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Eco. Junior Broadness.
My name is Junius Broadnax and I've been in the drifting scene for a long time now. It has changed my life in many ways, sometimes for the bad, sometimes for the good. When we didn't have these events, I admittedly would go out and have fun in the streets being younger. I didn't think about the consequences. As I've gotten older, I've learned to do things a more mature way and having these events sanctioned in a safe area, everybody's there to have fun, it's just a great, great thing to have. So hopefully you guys will change your mind on that. You know, a lot of us guys that have been in the event for a while and seen these younger guys getting into it, they're immature as well, so we're trying to, you know, speak some knowledge to them, hey, come out to the events, come out where it's safe, don't go out in the streets and do stupid stuff. So we wanna have a place for everyone to come and have fun and be safe, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Broadnax. Ms. Dupree.
Hello. I would just like to say that I've been drifting since I was sixteen years old and I scraped up every little bit of change I could to buy my first drift car. And about eight months ago, my best friend Leah Giammarva was paralyzed with the chest down because of street drifting and she was only nineteen years old. And because we have events, the chances of that happening aren't very large, but unfortunately it happened to her. So if you guys take away those events, more nineteen-year-olds or even younger than that will get injured, so I really hope you reconsider it and let us have our events back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Mr. Ben Howard, Ms. Patty Pearl Beg, I'm sorry, I cannot pronounce the last name, Pearl Pedbeg, I can't see the writing, and Mr. Al Bartel.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Mitchell, members of council, and the viewing audience, excuse me, here and on Channel twenty-six. Ben Howard, senior advocate. Following is an excerpt from cityethics.org regarding retaliation. Quote, "Ethics code provisions that prohibit an official from falsely impugning a citizen's reputation or retaliating against a citizen do not require the official to be successful in the lawsuit, nor do they cost a citizen a lot of money. Forcing an official to publicly defend her retaliation is, in the long run, the most important thing for the community. Retaliation such as this is harmful to everyone who worries about the consequences of speaking their minds on public issues. Citizens should not have to seek the protection of the First Amendment or of the federal court system. Local government leaders individually and through its ethics program should quickly make an example of the official and should not jeopardize the community by getting involved in an expensive federal suit." End of quote. I leave with you details about the source of this article, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Ms. Patty Ped Pearl or Pedbeg? I'll just say Ms. Patty. Okay, all right. Al Bartel.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, Al Bartel, West Atlanta resident. Today I rise to speak on a reliable strategic plan for the future of our city that is based on communication rather than a political marketing strategy. Neighborhood community and faith leaders have observed that political marketing strategies such as Invest Atlanta and Hire One Atlanta are being proposed as strategies for performance management when in fact they are political marketing strategies. A political marketing strategy is not sufficient to manage the integrity of this city and move us forward into the twenty-first century. Political marketing strategies allow for the reference points of lobbyists, special interest groups, and corporations to be the guiding force for our city and for our future. We believe that that is an unreliable strategy and should be dismantled and not used as a tool for decision-making process of our city. The decision-making process of our city should be based on a strategic plan. That strategic plan should have a reference point for communication for neighborhood leaders, community leaders, faith leaders, and small business leaders. If we do that, it will allow us to build a foundation for our city as we move forward into the twenty-first century. If that kinds of strategy needs legislation to have the administration get the message, then let that legislation be introduced, let that legislation be debated, and let that legislation be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. The final three speakers are Garland Fabrito, Ron Shakir, and Matthew Cardenali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to ask the council why they are not enforcing their legal agreement with the state of Georgia concerning the Georgia four-hundred tow. That agreement was that the tow would be removed when the construction was paid for. The road was paid for in two thousand and nine. The state is continuing to collect money, twenty million dollars a year from the people of Atlanta and Fulton County. They're routing that money up into Forsyth and a whole bunch of other areas. So could someone please explain to me why the council's not enforcing their agreement? I have hundreds of petitions here requesting that the council and the mayor enforce that agreement which was implemented by former Councilman Rob Pitts. Could anybody answer that question for me, please?
Does anyone care to answer? In fact, we don't have a back and forth here. What you could do is if you'd like, leave a copy of that petition and we'll have someone get back with you.
Could you identify who the person was that I need to be talking with and who will get back with me and when that will occur?
Certainly.
Because we're talking about twenty million dollars.
First of all, I think you certainly should reach out to the mayor's office, number one. Number two, it's certainly related to the state of Georgia, so you certainly may want to reach out to the governor's office. Mr. Shook has reminded me that the state tollway authority has something on the matter with respect to the agreement to which you refer. I'm not aware of it, but what we can do is if you leave some information with us, my office will get back with you.
So I was in the council, since we have thirty seconds left, I was in the council twenty years ago when Rob Pitts put that agreement on. It is in the legal agreement as I understand it. The state obviously is not gonna do anything about it because they're gonna continue to collect money and reroute it wherever they want. So I don't know what the legal authority is for that, why y'all letting them get away with it.
Thank you very much. Chairman, if you could get that information. Mr. Shakir.
Ron Shakir, Southwest Atlanta. We just witnessed a three-million-dollar agreement for the City of Atlanta to pay for injuries for a citizen that was blind that fell on the sidewalk. I would like to call for an end to the boycott, a boycott to take away, denying, infrastructure in sidewalks, repair in safety and lights in South Atlanta. How often have we seen lids that's broken? We know that the water department, people who come and read the meters, or people, the City of Atlanta workers, as they go back and forth, they have to see these broken lids, which is danger. Although three million dollars is being paid off, I know citizens who have been critically injured and nothing has been done for them because they just chalk it up because they know there's a boycott when it comes to serving and protecting certain communities. And there's been a coup and the coup was to demolish homes in the City of Atlanta on the South Side. Now, no more than in Ms. Shepherd or Mr. Young communities. We know that's where it's probably gonna be focused at the greatest. The fact is that there's also a connection to that and that's the so-called repurposing of schools. The repurposing and the rush to repurpose the schools that schools that students attend right now, where teachers teach at right now. And the fact is that we have So could someone please explain to me why the council's not enforcing their agreement? I have hundreds of petitions here requesting that the council and the mayor enforce that agreement which was implemented by former Councilman Rob Pitts. Could anybody answer that question for me, please?
Does anyone care to answer? In fact, we don't have a back and forth here. What you could do is if you'd like, leave a copy of that petition and we'll have someone get back with you.
Could you identify who the person was that I need to be talking with and who will get back with me and when that will occur?
Certainly.
Because we're talking about $20 million.
First of all, I think you certainly should reach out to the mayor's office, number one. Number two, it's certainly related to the state of Georgia, so you certainly may want to reach out to the governor's office. Mr. Shook has reminded me that the state tollway authority has something on the matter. With respect to the agreement to which you refer, I'm not aware of it, but what we can do is if you leave some information with us, we will, my office will get back with you.
So I was in the council, since we have 30 seconds left, I was in the council 20 years ago when Rob Pitts put that agreement on. It is in the legal agreement, as I understand it. The state obviously is not going to do anything about it because they're going to continue to collect money and reroute it wherever they want. So I don't know what the legal authority is for that, why y'all letting them get away with it.
Thank you very much. Chairman, if you could get that information. Mr. Shakir?
Ron Shakir, Southwest Atlanta. We just witnessed a $3 million agreement for the city of Atlanta to pay for injuries for a citizen that was blind that fell on the sidewalk. I would like to call for an end to the boycott, a boycott to take away, denying, infrastructure and sidewalks, repair and safety and lights in South Atlanta. How often have we seen lids that's broken? We know that the water department, people who come and read the meters, or people, the city of Atlanta workers, as they go back and forth, they have to see these broken lids, which is danger. Although $3 million is being paid off, I know citizens who have been critically injured and nothing has been done for them because they just chalk it up because they know there's a boycott when it comes to serving and protecting certain communities. And there's been a coup, and the coup was to demolish homes in the city of Atlanta on the South Side. Now, no more than in Ms. Shepherd or Mr. Young communities, we know that's where it's probably going to be focused at the greatest. The fact is that there's also a connection to that, and that's the so-called repurposing of schools. The repurposing and the rush to repurpose the schools, the schools that students attend right now, where teachers teach at right now. And the fact is that we had shelters that was overfilled, we had public housing that was waiting lists, we have students that have been neglected, years. In my father's generation, where books were always second and third down, hand-me-downs. The fact we have opportunities now to have schools, we ought to fight for those schools and not to allow them to be closed. My fact, we ought to fight for a moratorium on any closing of schools. This is an opportunity to focus on our youth who have been through so much, to focus on them and having all the teachers be able to give special attention to them instead of running them off and giving them seven seconds, seven minutes of why they should have their jobs. Call for a moratorium and legal action to stop the closing of any Atlanta public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shakir. Mr. Cardinale?
Hi, everybody. This is Matthew Charles Cardinale, news editor of AtlantaProgressiveNews.com. I first wanted to object to the comments that were made earlier today by Mr. Dave Walker, which were deplorable, lamentable, and unacceptable. I actually am here today to give you all your midterm scorecard grades for 2012. Atlanta Progressive News is proud of this scorecard. It contains 22 specific votes and other council-wide actions dating back to 2003, meaning that this is a quantifiable scorecard. Some of the recent items on here include airport contracts, Joanne McCrinas confirmation, ethics committee selection process, whether to grant speaking time for an advocate from People TV, bar hours, and the pension. Nadeline Archibong, 95% A. Michael Bond, 78.6, C+. C.T. Martin, 71.4, C-. Felicia Moore, 68.2, D+. Kwanzaa Hall, 56.25 F, although you're in fifth place with that F. Shepherd, 41.18 F. Young, 40.9 F. Smith, 36.4 F. Winslow, 35 F. Adrian, 33.3 F. Willis, 30 F. Shook, 27.3 F. Watson and Juan, tied, 26.67 F. And Keisha Lance Bottoms, 21.43 F. And just so you know, I will be filing today a first amended complaint in the secret vote lawsuit. I'll have a status report to the court within a few days, and I recently filed discovery which is due in a couple of weeks. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardinale. That brings us to the end of our public comment. We will now move to item number seven on the agenda, which is the report of the Journal. Madam Clerk?
I, Rhonda Daughon-Johnson, do hereby report to the council that the action minutes of the May 7, 2012, regular meeting of the Atlanta City Council are true and correct.
Okay. If there is no objection, we will file that report. We'll move now to communications.
The first item, 12-C-0704. To Ruben R. McDaniel, the third chairman, Atlanta Board of Education. Dear Chairman McDaniel, thank you for accommodating my recent request for the Atlanta City Council's participation on the Atlanta Public Schools Facilities Repurposing Committee. Your invitation to include the City Council on said committee is indicative of the ongoing communication and collaboration that exists between the Atlanta Board of Education and the Atlanta City Council. Pursuant to your request, I have asked Councilmember Aaron Watson, post two at large, to serve as the City Council's representative on the repurposing committee. Councilmember Watson brings a wealth of experience in this area, having served as a past chairman of the Atlanta Board of Education. As such, I believe he is a strong addition to the repurposing committee and, as a result, will make a significant contribution to its work product. I look forward to the continued partnership between our respective bodies as we work collectively to strengthen the education, enrichment, and future opportunities of our city's young people. As always, should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Yours for Ara, Atlanta, Caesar C. Mitchell.
Without objection, let's file that communication.
The next item, 12-C-0705. Dear Council President Caesar Mitchell, it is with great pleasure that we appoint Ms. Ashley Harris to serve on the Urban Design Commission to fill the lawyer position. Ms. Harris has resided in District 9 for quite some time and is very interested in serving on this board. We feel that she will be a great asset to the board and will serve with great distinction. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact Councilmember Felicia Moore at your convenience. Attached is Ms. Harris's resume for your review. Sincerely, Felicia A. Moore, Councilmember, District 9; C.T. Martin, Councilmember, District 10; and H. Lamar Willis, Councilmember, post three at large.
Okay. If there is no objection, we will refer this item to the Community Development Human Resources Committee and Committee on Council.
The next item, 12-C-0706. To the Clerk of Council from Dexter C. White, Deputy Commissioner, Department of Public Works. Please find attached a listing of employees authorized for overnight vehicle utilization for the period April 1, 2012 through October 1, 2012. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at extension 6240.
Okay. We'll file that notice without objection.
The next item, 12-C-0708. To Sharice Shields, Atlanta Citizen Review Board. Dear Ms. Shields, thank you for your letter of informing us of the expiration of the term of our current representative on the Atlanta Citizens Review Board on July 20, 2012. After discussion with our current representative, Alan Morris, we are happy to submit Mr. Morris as our choice to serve as our representative once again on the board. Thank you for submitting this choice to the Committee on Council and the Atlanta City Council for approval of Mr. Morris for another term. If you need additional information, please let me know. Sincerely, Karen F. Bearden, President, the League of Women Voters of Atlanta, Fulton County.
Okay. Let's refer that item to the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee and Committee on Council.
The next item, 12-C-0709. Dear Council President Mitchell and all members of council, pursuant to Section 2-1142 of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances, I have attached for your review corrected copy of the May 2012 Monthly Contracts Report to the Atlanta City Council and Clerk of Council. Pursuant to the requirements of Section 2-1142, please note that the copy of the May 2012 Monthly Contracts Report comprises the titles of contracts and methods of selection as well as those contracts authorized by the City Council with related dollar amounts. Where applicable, the Monthly Contracts Report will also include any emergency contracts, change orders, or changes in scope to designated contracts. Additionally, the monthly report pursuant to Article 3, Section 2, 176 of the Procurement Code lists those contracts not executed within 90 days of council approval and the reason therefore. Please let me know if you have any questions or need additional assistance. Sincerely, Adam L. Smith, Chief Procurement Officer.
Okay. If there is no objection, we will file that communication.
That concludes the communications.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move to item number nine on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. I will entertain a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion in proper second from Mr. Bond and Ms. Shepherd, respectively. If there are no comments regarding the motion to adopt, we'll entertain a vote on that motion, Madam Clerk.
The vote is open. Please vote. Has anyone, has everyone voted? The vote is closed. 12 ayes, 0 nays.
12 ayes, 0 nays, the motion carries. The agenda is adopted for this meeting. We'll move to item number 10, which is the consideration of veto legislation. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
There is none.
Any unfinished business?
No unfinished business.
And we'll move now to the approval and adoption of the consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Ms. Archibong? I can't, if you could put your speaker on, please.
Yes, under City Utilities, under Resolutions, I'm trying to get there, I'm sorry. Okay. The resolution number is... Thank you, Ms. Moore. Thank you very much.
So it's an ordinance or a resolution?
Oh, yeah, it is. It's an ordinance. I'm sorry, I'm getting my mind together. It's item five on page four, 12-0-0697.
Okay. We have item number five on page four, ordinance 0697. Any other items? Okay. With the exception of that item, Madam Clerk, let's take the vote on Section 1 of the consent agenda. The motion is to adopt.
The vote is open. Would everyone please vote? Would everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 13 ayes, 0 nays.
13 ayes, 0 nays, the motion carries. Section 1 is adopted. We'll move now to Section 2. Are there any comments, questions, or items that need to be addressed in Section 2? There being none, Madam Clerk, let's take the vote on...
Vote is open. Please vote. Has everyone voted? The vote is closed. 13 ayes, 0 nays.
13 ayes, 0 nays, the motion carries. These items will be referred. We'll move now to item number 13 on the agenda, which is the report of standing committees. Our first committee report is the Committee on Council. Chairperson is Ms. Yolanda Adrian. Ms. Adrian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I hope you have your agenda in front of you. The first item is 12-C-0479, a communication from Kristi Jackson, Chair NPUK, to Council President Caesar C. Mitchell submitting Ms. Kristi Garrison Harrison as NPUK. May Ray Boy Commission, and the motion is favorable.
And the motion before us is to affirm and confirm that communication. Any discussion from the body? There being none, Madam Clerk, let's take the vote.
The vote is open. Has everyone voted? The vote is closed. 13 ayes, 0 nays.
Okay. The vote is 13 ayes, 0 nays. The item is confirmed.
Thank you. The next item, number 2, 12-C-0624, a communication from Kathy Richards, President, Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, to Municipal Clerk Rhonda Daughon-Johnson, submitting their appointment of Mr. Bill Bozarth as their representative to serve as a member of the Citizen Review Board, scheduled to begin on the date of confirmation, and this is also favorable.
Okay. The motion before us is to confirm this communication. There's no discussion or comment, let's go ahead and take the vote, Madam Clerk.
The vote is open. Please vote. Has everyone voted? The vote is closed. 13 ayes, 0 nays.
13 ayes, 0 nays, the motion carries. This communication is confirmed. Ms. Adrian?
And the final communication is 12-C-0625, a communication from Kathy Richards, President, Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, to Municipal Clerk Rhonda Daughon-Johnson, submitting their appointment of Ms. Michelle Uchiyama as their representative to serve as a member of the Beltline Tax Allocation Advisory Committee, scheduled to begin on the date of council confirmation, and this is favorable as well.
Okay. The motion before us is to confirm this communication. Any discussion from the body? There being none, Madam Clerk, let's take the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. 13 ayes, 0 nays.
13 ayes, 0 nays, the motion carries. This communication is confirmed. Ms. Adrian?
We're now under resolutions, the first one, 12-R-0707, a resolution by Committee on Council to correct the period of time to be served by Samantha P. Williams, Ph.D., as a full council appointee to the Fulton County Board of Health from four years to six years so as to be consistent with the governing state laws, to rescind conflicting resolutions and for other purposes, and this is favorable.
Okay. The motion before us is to adopt this resolution. Any discussion from the body? There being none, Madam Clerk, let's take the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. Has everyone voted? Please vote. Would everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 13 ayes, 0 nays.
13 ayes, 0 nays, the motion carries. This resolution is adopted. Ms. Adrian?
All right. The last one, number two, is a nomination for the Budget Commission. We've received two nominations thus far, Aaron Watson and Yolanda Adrian. And I'll read this in and see if there were any other nominations from the floor. 12-R-0710, a resolution by Committee on Council appointing council members to two positions on the Budget Commission to be filled by two members of the governing body nominated and confirmed by the governing body at large for one-year terms for the purpose of performing the duties and responsibilities of the commission in connection with the fiscal year 2013 budget for the city of Atlanta and for other purposes. And so, again, the two nominees are Aaron Watson and Yolanda Adrian.
All right. Ms. Adrian has asked for any nominations from the floor. Okay. All right. So how do we want to execute this decision?
Well, then, I would...
Ballot around, or you've got...
Well, there's two nominations and two openings, so unless there's anything else, then we're...
Okay. There's a motion by Ms. Moore and a second. Yeah, it will be out of order when we get to this Elm system up and running. But Ms. Smith and Mr. Young have made a motion and a second, correct?
We'll do it correctly. Is this good, Felicia? I make a motion to pass the slate. Because there's two seats and you have two people, so that would be a slate, correct?
Correct. Okay. There's a motion in proper second to accept and confirm the slate of appointees of council members to the Budget Commission. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, there being none, Madam Clerk, let's take the vote.
The vote is open. On the motion to adopt 12-R-0710, which includes the slate of members Yolanda Adrian and Aaron Watson to the Budget Commission, please vote. Has everyone voted? The vote is closed. 13 ayes, 0 nays.
13 ayes, 0 nays, the motion carries. This resolution is adopted. Thank you, council members, Adrian and Watson, for your service. Ms. Adrian?
I have one announcement for council members. We are scheduled slated to go live on Elm's July 2. And in order to do that, we have a final opportunity to have a practice committee meetings and council meetings, the first work, I'm sorry, the first week of June. You should receive an email... You should receive an email invitation, Mr. President, is that going out today?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be an invitation, two choices of times to come, and so I urge you to make every effort to come to the training. If we are real focused, we should be able to get through the training in between an hour and hour and a half. And after June, we can't do any practice sessions because the Elm system will be actually populated with our legislation. So June is last call for training as a group, and the goal is to go live July 2nd.
Thank you, Ms. Adrian. I can only ditto what Ms. Adrian has said. I certainly encourage all council members to get as much training as you can before we go live after we pass the budget. We'll move now to the next committee report, which is the City Utilities Committee. Chairperson is Ms. Nadine Archibong.
If everybody could turn to page 25. And we have three papers to consider, all resolutions, and then the one item we pulled off of consent, which is an ordinance. So starting 12-R-0565, a resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor to issue a task order to BGR, a joint venture, for FC 4906C, Architectural Engineering and Design Services on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for architectural and engineering services in an amount not to exceed $1,991,000. All contracted work shall be charged to and paid from the listed Fund Department Organization account and PTO and for other purposes. May we take all three together because of condition? Well, no, we have an abstention, so we'll just leave it as is. All right, so the motion from the committee is to adopt.
Okay, the motion before us is to adopt this item. Any discussion from the body?
Oh, wait a minute, she's going to abstain on all three of them.
That's fine. The motion before us is to adopt the resolution. Madam, I'm sorry, Mr. Webb, please take the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is now closed. Eleven yays, zero nays, one abstention.
Eleven yays, zero nays, one abstention. This item is adopted. Ms. Adrian.
Mr. President, I'll be abstaining on all three of these because of Arcadis and family relationship.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Adrian. Ms. Archibong is going to take the next two together, given that they both have the same condition and the same circumstance for the abstention.
Thank you for that clarification, and I will do so. 12-R-0566, a substitute resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor to issue a task order to JP2, a joint venture for FC 4906E, Architectural Engineering and Design Services on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for Architectural and Engineering Services in an amount not to exceed $3,797,217. All contracted work shall be charged to and paid from the listed Fund Department Organization and account and PTO and for other purposes. Next, 12-R-0703, a resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor to issue a task order to Brown &amp; Caldwell, Delon Hampton &amp; Associates, chartered a joint venture for FC 4906D, Architectural Engineering and Design Services on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for Architectural and Engineering Services in an amount not to exceed $1,239,444... Wait a minute, $1,239,444. All contracted work shall be charged to and paid from the listed Fund Department Organization and account and PTO and for other purposes. These papers both come to full counsel with motion to adopt. On condition? Which has been met.
Okay, the motion before us is to adopt both items. Any discussion from the body? All right, there being none, Mr. Webb, let's take the vote on both items.
The vote is open. The vote is now closed.
Please record Ms. Shepherd as a yes vote, please.
That would be twelve yays, zero nays, and one abstention.
Okay, twelve yays, zero nays, one abstention. This item passes. It is adopted. The abstention, the reason for the abstention has been stated previously by Ms. Adrian. Ms. Archibong.
All right, and then from the consent agenda, item five, 12, I'm on page four, 12-0-0697, an ordinance by council members Nadine M. Archibong, H. Lamar Willis, C.T. Martin, Quanza Hall, Keisha Lance Bottoms, Carla Smith, Howard Shook, Felicia A. Moore, Michael J. Bond, Erin Watson, Alex Wong, Joyce Shepherd, and Yolanda Adrian, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the State of Georgia and the United States of America, subject to approval by the court, to modify the First Amendment Consent decree, Civil Action File Number 198CV1956, and for other purposes. I was the one who requested that this be removed from the consent agenda for the purpose of having the executive session so that we can discuss some of the foundations upon which this agreement was reached. Some of the financial information in particular for me. So I would recommend then that we not act on this yet, but that we hold this to the end of the meeting for the purpose of having that executive session, if the members would agree with that.
Okay, so you're making a recommendation to do the executive session at the end of the meeting? Or are you recommending doing the executive session now?
I'm open to now, but I just wanted to... What do you think?
No, I mean, council members, is there any objection to getting, because we will have to vote on this item anyway. Is there any objection to doing the executive session now, or do council members prefer to wait until the end of the standing committee reports? Ms. Moore.
It seems to me like if we can get through the standing committee reports, we can do it last, maybe motivate us not to be there for the fall day.
All right, there's no objection. We will wait till the end of the standing committee reports.
All right, then that concludes my committee report for now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Archibong. We will move now to the next committee report, which is the Community Development Human Resources Committee. Sarah, report.
Mr. President, there's no report today.
Any announcements?
No, not right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shepherd. We will now move to the zoning committee, I'm sorry, the Public Safety Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item listed on the agenda, resolution, item number one on page 36, 12-R-0694, resolution by Councilmember Michael J. Bond, authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into a contractual agreement on behalf of the Municipal Court of Atlanta with Sentinel Offender Services LLC for FC-5440, privatized probation services, revenue generating contract. All funds generated under this contract shall be deposited into the applicable general fund revenue accounts and agency funds, liability accounts, and for other purposes. The motion is to file.
And the motion before us is to file this item. Any discussion from the body? Okay, there being none, Mr. Webb, let's, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, you're back. Let's take the vote.
Vote is open. Please vote. Vote is closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, the motion carries. This item is filed.
That completes the items for the Public Safety Committee, but I do have one announcement. The next ATAG II public hearing will be this Thursday, May 24th, at the Adamsville Recreation Center, located at 3201 Mariner King Jr. Drive, at 6:30 p.m., and the public obviously is invited to participate, and we need the input from the public to conduct the work. So again, that date is May 24th, 6:30 p.m., at the Adamsville Recreation Center at 3201 Mariner King Jr. Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. We'll move now to the zoning committee report. The chairperson is Mr. Alex Wong.
Thank you, Mr. President. If everyone would please turn to page 46, I'd like to begin with the summary report. And, Mr. President, I'd like to take all five items together, please.
Okay, no problem.
All right. 12-0-0466, zoning number Z12-10, location 240 Colonial Homes Drive Northwest, MPUC, Council District Eight. The change is from RG3 to MR4AC. 11-0-1782, zoning number Z11-32, 729 and 721 Longleaf Drive Northeast, MPUB, Council District Seven, R3 to MR4BC. Item three is 12-0-0227, zoning number U12-02 and U02-08. Location is 2606 Austin Drive Southeast, MPUO, Council District Five. Change is a special use permit for a community service facility. Item four is 12-0-0385, zoning number Z12-05. Location is 3820 Ivy Road Northeast, MPUB, Council District Seven. Change is R3 to PDH. And the final item, 12-0-0156, zoning numbers Z12-01 and Z08-14. Location is 1185 Collier Road Northwest, MPUC, Council District Nine. Change is MR3C to MR3C for site plan amendment. Motion from the committees to adopt all five is amended.
Okay, the motion before us is to adopt each of these items as amended. Any discussion from the body? There being none, Madam, Mr. Webb, let's take the vote.
The vote is now closed. Twelve yays, zero nays.
Okay, twelve yays, zero nays, the motion carries. Okay, please record Mr. Bond as a yay. Okay, twelve yays, zero nays, the motion carries. These items are adopted. Mr. Wong.
Thank you. If my colleagues will now turn to page 41, ordinances for second read. The first item is 12-0-0228, zoning number Z12-02. The change is a substitute ordinance amending the 1982 zoning ordinance of the City of Atlanta by replacing Chapter 18L, SPI 12, Buckhead Lennox Stations Special Public Interest District with a new chapter entitled 18L SPI-12, Buckhead Lennox Stations Special Public Interest District. It's a text amendment. Motion from the committee is to adopt on substitute.
Okay, the motion before us is to adopt this item on substitute. Any discussion from the body? Now, so your motion is to adopt on substitute, Mr. Wong?
Correct.
Okay, the motion before us is to adopt on substitute. Okay, any discussion from the body? Okay, there being none, Mr. Webb, let's take the vote.
The vote is now closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, the motion carries. This item is adopted. Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take items two and three together, please.
Okay, no objection. Go ahead.
Item 12-0-0610, zoning number Z12-08668, Atlanta Student Movement Southwest, MPUT, Council District Four. The change is RG3 to RG4. And item 12-0-0613, zoning number U12-08. Location is 668 Atlanta Student Movement Boulevard Southwest. Change is a special use permit for an assisted living facility. Motion from the committee is to adopt both items as amended.
And the motion before us is to adopt both of these items as amended. Any discussion from the body? There being none. Mr. Webb, let's take the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote.
Yeah, one says 687, it needs to say 613.
Please hold while we correct the numbers before we close the vote. Will everyone please vote again? The vote is now closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, the motion carries. Both items are adopted. Mr. Wong.
The next item is 12-0-0687, an ordinance authorizing the installation of public art at various locations in the Buckhead community. Motion from the committee is to adopt.
Okay, the motion before us is to adopt this item. Any discussion from the body? There being none. Mr. Webb, let's take the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is now closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, the motion carries. This ordinance is adopted. Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next items are ordinances for first reading. I'd like to take both items, one and two, together, please.
Please do.
All right, first item is 12-0-0701, zoning number U12-11. Location is 542 Boulevard Northeast, MPUM, Council District Two. Change is a special use permit for a community center. Second item is 12-0-0702, zoning number U12-12. Location is 316 Maple Northeast, MPUB, Council District Seven. Change is a special use permit for outdoor amusement enterprises, exhibits, entertainment, meetings, displays, or sales area, or outdoor areas for religious ceremonies. Motion is to refer to ZRB and zoning.
Okay, the motion for both is to refer them to ZRB and to zoning. Any discussion on the motion to refer? There being none, Mr. Webb, let's take the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is now closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, the motion carries. These items are referred. Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Mr. President. That ends my report.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wong. We'll move now to the Transportation Committee report. Chairperson is Mr. C.T. Martin.
1000467, a substitute ordinance by Transportation Committee to amend Chapter 138 entitled "Street, Sidewalk, and Other Public Places," Article 4, Division 2, Section 138-84 and 138-85, so as to amend the procedures to be followed for the installation of traffic-comming devices in the public right-of-way and for other purposes, and the recommendation is to file.
Okay, the motion before us is to file this item. Any questions from the body? There being none, Mr. Webb, let's take the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. The vote is now closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, the motion carries. This item is filed. Mr. Martin.
That's a report.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Martin. We'll now move to the report of the... I'm sorry, yes. Yes, Ms. Adrian.
I have a question for the city attorney. The district that I serve is asking a lot of questions. There's a great deal of interest in the FAA investigation of GDOT's certification process, and wondered if you had any updates to report.
Councilmember Adrian, the city is not party to the conversations between FAA and GDOT, so I don't have an update from either one of them. I can tell you that the city has been responsive to any requests or questions to us. So we have had questions for information, and we've answered those questions as quickly as we've gotten them. But in terms of the conversations that the two agencies are having between them, the city is not a party to those conversations. And as soon as I get an update or if I hear anything more from them, then I will come back to this body with that information.
Okay, so we haven't gotten any letters from FAA or GDOT directly to us. Airport, I mean.
Since the original letters, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for the update.
All right, thank you, Ms. Adrian. We'll move now to the Finance Executive Committee Report. Chairperson, Ms. Felicia Moore.
All right, page 49, Item Number One, 12-O-0501. This is an Ordinance and Charter Amendment by Council Members H. Lamar Willis